Hey guys, we are going to start off by reviewing and doing the study guide for college algebra since it's getting ready to be towards the end of the semester. So let's go ahead and get started. First, we are going to combine like terms here and distribute. So here we go, we're gonna get negative six x plus twelve plus three equals nine minus x minus four. We can go ahead and combine these two. Negative six x plus fifteen equals negative x plus five by combining these two. Now we can add x and subtract fifteen from both sides. So now we're going to get negative five x equals negative ten. Divide both sides by negative five and get x equals two. That's our final answer. Here's a rational expression and what we can do is multiply everything by the least common denominator which is going to be twenty. So if we go ahead and multiply everything by twenty, show you guys what this is going to look like here. We are going to get five times x plus three minus four times x minus two equals two times x plus one minus twenty. Now how I got that? I'll show you over here for one of the terms. It's going like this and then these simplify, which is how I'm getting the five right here and then our x plus three. Okay, so that's what I did for all of these. The twenty cancels out with our five to get four. The twenty cancels out with our ten to get two. And now this just becomes a linear equation where we can combine like terms, excuse me, distribute first and then combine like terms. So the hardest part about this where I see many students make mistakes is remembering that there is a negative number, a negative attached to a number on the outside that we have to distribute into our parentheses. So this is going to be five x plus fifteen minus four x plus eight equals two x plus two minus twenty. Now we're going to combine all like terms to get x plus twenty-three equals two x minus eighteen. So now we can subtract two x, well let's go ahead and actually subtract x from both sides and then add eighteen, that way we can have our positive numbers. So this is going to be forty-one equals x. That's our final answer. Here's another rational equation. And similarly to how we did with when there was a whole number as the denominator, we can go ahead and multiply everything by the least common denominator. Okay, in this case, this is a difference of squares and it's going to factor to x plus five x minus five. And in fact, that is going to be our least common denominator here. So let's go ahead and multiply by that. And when we distribute this to both terms, excuse me, to all terms, that's going to cancel out with this whole denominator, it's gonna go away. Then we're going to end up with two times x plus five because this denominator is going to cancel out with this numerator. And then we're going to have minus one times x minus five because this denominator is going to cancel out with this. So we're just gonna have this left over which is here. And then this, as I mentioned, whole denominator is going to cancel out with this. So we're just gonna have equals eleven. So once again, we have just a regular linear equation where we are going to distribute our terms, combine like terms, and then solve it. So now we're going to have x plus fifteen equals eleven. Subtract fifteen from both sides, so we're going to get x equals negative four. Now it is important here that we go back and check to make sure that we don't have an extraneous solution. In this case, we're not going to because the only way that we would have an error is if either one of these, any one of these denominators were equal to zero. When we plug in negative four, we are not going to get zero in the denominator, but I'll still show you how to do that just in case. So we have two over negative four minus five minus one over negative four plus five equals eleven over negative four squared minus twenty-five. So we're gonna have two over negative nine minus one over one equals eleven over sixteen minus twenty-five. So this is gonna be two over negative nine minus nine over nine. So I'm just gonna multiply this guy by nine over nine equals eleven over negative nine. So here we have negative eleven over nine equals negative eleven over nine. True solution, so it's good to go. If it is an extraneous solution, we will get a false solution at the very end of this. And in this case, we get a true solution, so x equals four does in fact work. Okay, so on this one, let's go ahead and factor the denominator on the left. So this is going to become x minus four x plus three. You can see here that we have x minus four and x plus three. So this in fact is going to be our least common denominator. And subsequently, what we can multiply both sides by. So when we do that, again, our denominators are going to cancel out on the very left. So we're gonna be left with negative fourteen. Then this denominator is going to cancel out with this. So we're going to have negative one times x plus three. And then this denominator is going to cancel out with this one. So we're gonna have two times x minus four. From there, we'll distribute our negative one, we'll also distribute this two. So negative fourteen minus x minus three equals two x minus eight. Then we'll have negative seventeen minus x equals two x minus eight. Add x to both sides and also add eight to both sides. So we're going to get negative nine equals three x. Divide both sides by three and then we're going to get x equals negative three. Again, we do have to plug in and make sure that we are not gonna get zero in the denominator. Now I can see already that that's going to be an issue right here. So this actually is an extraneous solution. The way to actually prove that, if your professor is requiring that you show work for this, is going to be like this. And I would write something like this. Denominators cannot equal zero, so it's an extraneous solution. That should be sufficient. Simplify the following complex operations. This is fairly simple, we just have to combine the real parts and the imaginary parts. And again, as I mentioned before, the hardest thing that I've seen most students make mistakes on is remembering to distribute this negative. So this is going to be two plus three i minus three plus eight i. So negative one plus eleven i and that's your answer. So on this one, we're going to distribute our four i, so we're going to get twelve i minus twenty-eight i squared. Now remember that i squared is the same thing as negative one. So twelve i minus twenty-eight times negative one is going to be positive twenty-eight plus twelve i. Since we have two binomials here, we're going to have to foil. So do our first terms, our outer terms, our inner terms, and then our last terms. And we're doing the product of those numbers. So one times two is two, one times negative three i is negative three i. i times two is two i and then i times negative three i is negative three i squared. So here we're going to have two minus i minus three times negative one. So we're going to have a total of five which is two plus three minus i. Here's a rational expression with imaginary numbers. So in this case, we have to multiply both top and bottom by the complex conjugate, which is going to be the denominator with a switched middle term. And nothing else about the denominator changes, then we have to foil this. So the product of our first two terms is going to be twelve. The product of our outer terms is going to be three i. Then the product of our inner terms is going to be eight i and the product of our last terms is going to be two i squared. Now the denominator is always going to factor to a difference of squares. So we're going to have four squared minus i squared. Now to simplify this, we can combine like terms. So twelve plus eleven i plus two times negative one over sixteen minus i squared is negative one. Now we can go ahead and further combine like terms. This is going to be ten plus eleven i over seventeen. And technically, we need to separate the real part from the imaginary part. So this is how your final answer should be written. Here we are solving for x, so we have x squared equals eighty-one. The inverse operation of squaring something is square rooting it. So we are going to square root both sides. And don't forget to add in your plus or minus whenever you do that. So our answer is x equals plus or minus nine. Here we are going to, well, we can do one of two things. We can either factor out the four first or we can just go ahead and subtract sixty-four from the get-go. So we have four x squared equals negative sixty-four. And then we're going to divide both sides by four. So x squared equals negative sixteen. From here, we are going to take the square root of both sides. And we're going to have x equals plus or minus the square root of negative sixteen. So we can break down our radical to be the square root of negative one times the square root of sixteen. Remember that the square root of negative one is i. So this is going to be plus or minus four i. And that's your final answer. X squared minus eight x plus twelve. First, we're going to factor this. So this factors to x minus six x minus two. And we're going to have x minus six equals zero, x minus two equals zero. Add six to both sides, add two to both sides. So we're going to get x equals six and x equals two. These are your final answers. Here we have to apply the A-C method. And so we are going to multiply three and six, that's going to go at the top here, eighteen. We're looking for factors of eighteen that add to negative eleven. So that's gonna be negative nine, negative two. I prefer to do the bottoms up method. So I'm going to write down x minus two and x minus nine. And because we have a three out here, we can just divide both of these by three. If they divide evenly, we'll just simplify them. And if they don't like this one, it'll be three x minus two and then x minus three equals zero. Now we're going to do the same thing as we did before. Three x minus two equals zero, x minus three equals zero. So x equals three. And then add two and divide by three. So our answer is going to be x equals two-thirds. Three x squared plus five x minus six. Here we're also going to apply the A-C method. This time we have negative eighteen and five. Um, so it looks like, let's see here, we've got one and eighteen. We've got two and nine, three and six. Okay, it doesn't look like any of those factors are going to be, they're not gonna sum to five. So we have a couple of options. We can either do the quadratic formula, which I think that I would rather do than completing the square. So let's go ahead and do that. The quadratic formula is x equals negative b plus or minus the square root of b squared minus four A-C. And the entire thing is over two A. This is our A term. This is our B term. And this is our C term. So we are going to apply and fill in all of our terms here. Okay? So we're gonna have x equals negative five plus or minus the square root of five squared minus four times three times negative six. And the answer is all over two times three. Now we're going to have x equals negative five plus or minus the square root of twenty-five plus twenty-four times three is seventy-two. And that answer is over six. So now, x equals negative five plus or minus the square root of ninety-seven over six. And the square root of ninety-seven does not simplify, so these are our two answers. Okay, for this one, six x squared minus seventeen x plus twelve, we can go ahead and try to factor it and see if that will work. So twelve times six is going to be seventy-two. And we have to look and see if there are factors of seventy-two that add to negative seventeen. And that's gonna be negative nine and negative eight. So I'm gonna apply the bottoms up method again. And this time, because we have a six here, we are going to divide both sides by six. We will simplify first. They're not going to divide evenly, but they will simplify. Okay? And then we set both of these equal to zero. Um, and so our answers are going to be x equals four-thirds and x equals three halves. Now, if you wanna write out the final factored version, I'll go ahead and write that too. Okay? And then, and in essence, you would set this one equal to zero and get that and this one equal to zero and get that. But you can also just start from here and go there if you're not required to write this final factored form. So here we have two sides of the equation with x on both sides. And we're going to have to distribute and get everything set on one side of the equation. Um, so let's go ahead and foil this. We're going to have six x squared minus eighteen x plus five x minus fifteen. And that's going to be equal to negative fourteen x squared minus ten x plus x minus twelve. Okay, so all I did was go ahead and distribute this and then distribute this, distribute this to here. And now we're going to combine like terms. So we have x's in common on both sides. We also have x squareds in common that we will get together and also are constants. So we are going to end up, if we add fourteen x over, we're going to get twenty x squared. The combination of these two together is going to be negative thirteen x. And if we combine these two, that's going to be negative nine x. So if we add nine x over to negative thirteen x, we're gonna get negative four x. Okay, then we have fifteen and twelve. If we add twelve over, we're going to get negative three. And now we can go ahead and try to factor this. So negative sixty and negative four. Let's see if we can find some factors. Okay, so we know that it's one and sixty, two and thirty, three and twenty, four and fifteen. We've got five and twelve, six and ten. And it looks like that's gonna be our answer. Negative ten and six. So here's the bottoms up method again. X minus ten, x plus six. Then we are going to divide both sides by twenty. We'll go ahead and simplify like this, just dividing both sides by two. So our answers are going to be x equals positive one-half and negative three-tenths. And again, if you are required to write the final factored form, we're just gonna bring this two up and this ten up. So our two solutions for x are going to be one-half and negative three-tenths. Last but not least, for these, we're going to distribute this x. So we're going to get x squared plus four x and then we can add over that six. So here we are going to try to factor it. Um, this one actually is not gonna factor, but if it did, we would try to do one times six and then two times three. So it looks like we can do the quadratic formula again on this. Okay, so we're going to have x equals negative b plus or minus the square root of b squared minus four A-C. And that's all over two A. So b is going to be four, but it's minus four. Plus or minus the square root of four squared minus four times one times six all over two times one. This is going to be x equals negative four plus or minus the square root of sixteen minus twenty-four over two. X equals negative four plus or minus the square root of negative eight over two. Now we can simplify that radical by breaking down eight into its prime factors and circling the groups and taking the groups out of the radical. So this is going to be the two here. This two is left in the radical. And then we have the square root of negative eight, so that is going to include an i. This is going to be two i radical two over two. And as I mentioned, you should separate the real parts from the imaginary parts. And this actually all simplifies as well. So this is going to be negative two plus or minus square root of two i or i radical two is fine. But this is our, these are our final answers. Here we are solving for x and we have to solve by using square roots. So the first thing that we are going to do is square both sides to free what's underneath the radical. So we're going to add four to both sides and now this is just a regular equation. Divide both sides by five and that's going to be seventeen. Here we want to isolate the radical, so subtract x from both sides. We're gonna get the square root of two x minus three equals three minus x. We're going to square both sides. And now we have a binomial on the right side that needs to be foiled. Remember that whenever you have a binomial squared, it's the amount of times that the parentheses are repeated. So we're going to have two x minus three equals, now we're going to distribute this, nine minus three x minus three x plus x squared. And we're going to have negative six x on the right side minus two x. Actually, I'll do those steps separately so that I don't confuse you. Okay? Now we're going to subtract two x from both sides and also add three over. So we're going to get zero equals twelve minus eight x plus x squared. Just gonna rewrite this in standard form so that we can easily see how to factor this. So we're going to have factors of twelve that add to negative eight. That's gonna be negative six and negative two. Since we have a one out here, we don't have to necessarily apply the bottoms up method. We can just solve it straight like this. So x minus six equals zero, x minus two equals zero. So x equals six and x equals two. Write the solutions for x using interval notation. So the absolute value inequalities, I like to explain them like this. First, we're going to isolate the absolute value symbol. We're going to get eight is less than the absolute value of negative five x minus four. I'm gonna rewrite this a little bit so that our absolute value is on the left side so I can better explain this to you. Now remember that this opening was towards the absolute value symbol. My opening is still towards the absolute value symbol. So I have not changed anything, I've just rewritten it. Now the way I like to explain this is via a number line. What the absolute value is defined as is the distance away from the number. So if we put negative five x minus four in the middle, what we're saying is that the distance away from that number is greater than eight units in both directions. That means that our solution set is going to exist on the left side of negative eight because that would be more than eight units away from this side. And it's also going to exist on the right side of positive eight for the same reason. That's more than eight units on this side. So we're going to set up two inequalities as a result. We're going to have negative five x minus four is less than negative eight. That's going to account for this side. Then we're going to have negative five x minus four is greater than eight and that's gonna account for this side. Now we're going to solve these two separately for x. So we're going to get negative five x is less than negative four. Divide both sides by negative five. And then also remember, when we divide by a negative, we do have to flip our inequality. So this is one solution set. Then we have to add four to both sides. Negative five x is greater than twelve. Divide by negative five. Don't forget to switch your inequality. And then this is our second set here. Okay? It says write the solutions for x using interval notation, so I will show you that. Interval notation means that we are going to show the solution set written as an interval. So this solution set comes first. X is less than negative twelve fifths. So that means that negative twelve fifths and below all the way to negative infinity. And we're going to have four fifths all the way to infinity. So this is technically the correct way to write this in interval notation. Here's another inequality where we're just having to solve for x. So we are going to subtract eight from both sides here. So we'll get negative x is less than five where x is greater than negative five. This is our first one. And we also have to distribute this four. So four x minus eight is less than or equal to twelve. Add eight to both sides, so four x is less than or equal to twelve. So x is less than or equal to five. Okay? This says and, so what we need to do is look at our inequalities and look at our graphs and see where they overlap if at all. So here is negative five, here's positive five. And we would have an open circle and also shading to the right here. That would be this guy. Now we have x is less than or equal to negative, or x is less than or equal to five. So we would fill in our circle here and we would shade everything to the left would be that guy. Okay? Now we're looking for the overlap which exists between here including five. So this is going to be from negative five to five. This is parentheses because it's an open circle strictly greater than. This is a hard bracket because it's a filled in circle and it's less than or equal to. John invests in a three-year investment plan which returns one point four simple interest annually. He invests two thousand dollars less in an eighteen-month stock plan which returns nine percent in simple interest annually. If the total amount he gains from both investments is twenty-two, two hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-five cents, determine how much he invested in each investment plan. So for this problem, we are going to use a simple interest formula, I equals P R T. We're gonna have to use it twice because there are two investment accounts. So we have the interest earned from the first investment plan. We have the interest earned from the second investment plan. We have the principal um, in relation to another one. Okay, so he invests two thousand dollars less. One is three years, one is eighteen months. Um, we have some interest here. So let's go ahead and get started. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and write down I one plus I two equals two twenty-two seventy-five. Okay, that comes from this part right here. He, the amount of interest he gains from both investments is two twenty-two seventy-five. So we know this to be true. Now the principal amount, he invests two thousand dollars less. So that means the principal from the first one. Right, and then we'll have P two as well. Um, let's see, the principal of the second one actually is going to be two thousand dollars less than the first one. And then we have to turn our years and months into the same unit. So I'm gonna turn them into years. So this guy is So this guy is going to be one point five here. So the time for this one is going to be one point five. The rate is point nine percent, which is point zero. Let's see, one, two, point zero zero nine. We don't know the principal yet and we also don't know the interest yet. For the first one, we're going to have i one. And we also don't know how much he invested in that one yet either. But the rate is one point four, so that's gonna be point zero one four. And the time is three years. So let's go ahead and simplify this at least. And then we can have a system of equations, eliminate some variables, and then we'll go from there. So point zero one four times three is going to be. Point zero four two. And then we also have a one point five times point zero zero nine, that's going to be. Uh, let's see here, point zero one three five. Now, we have two equations and two variables and we can go ahead and. Let's go ahead and add these together. Since we have our P two in terms of P one, we can go ahead and replace P two with this value. P one minus two thousand. Times point zero one three five. Okay, and let's go ahead and distribute that. So two thousand times point zero one three five, that's going to be twenty-seven. That worked out nicely. Now that we have i two. We have i one plus i two, we have this equation right here. We can go ahead and combine these two equations with this one and solve for our expression. So here, we're going to divide both sides by point zero four two. And that's just going to give us the answer for P one. Okay, we'll go ahead and put this equation in this one. So we'll have i two equals point zero one three five. Times i one over point zero four two minus twenty-seven. And now we have two equations and two variables. So we have this whole equation over here, which is i one plus i two. Then we have this equation over here, which is also in terms of i one and i two. Now, this one. Is equal to i two, so we can actually substitute that right there and then we'll get an answer for i one. And that is how much interest the first investment would have had. So i one plus. Point zero one three five times i one over point zero four two. Minus twenty-seven, that's gonna equal two twenty-two point seven five. So when I went ahead and divided these two. This is what I got here. Point three two one four. Still times i one minus twenty-seven. Okay, and that's going to be two twenty-two point seven five. Now we can combine these two. Which is just one i one and point three two one four i one. So we'll get one point three two one four i one. Let's go ahead and add this twenty-seven over here. So that's going to be two forty-nine point seven five. Now we'll divide both sides by the one. Point three two one four. And I got i one to be one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So now we can work backwards and start filling in some of the other ones. Since we got an answer here of one eighty-nine for i one, we can go ahead and plug that in right here. Um, excuse me, right here, and then we'll get i two. So two twenty-two seventy-five. Minus one eighty-nine, that also means that the second investment here. Is going to be. Thirty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Okay, now again, working backwards, we can come back. Where we got the principle, the first principle over here and plug in P one. So. Plug in i one. Let's see, we come over here and do that. So we're going to have the first principle is i one and we know that i one is a hundred and eighty-nine. Divided by point zero four two. That answer is going to be forty-five hundred dollars. Now, we also know that P two is two thousand dollars less than that. So we know that P two is going to be twenty-five hundred dollars. And those two are our final answers. For the following, determine the domain of each function. For rational functions like this, we only have to examine the denominator because that's the only place that the. Function could have a part of the domain that's not going to exist. So what we have to do is factor the denominator here. And that's going to factor to x plus two, x plus five. We know that in math, denominators can never be zero. So we're going to set x plus two times x plus five cannot be zero. That means x plus two cannot be zero and x plus five also cannot be zero. In other words, x cannot be negative two and x cannot be negative five. So as far as our domain is concerned, it would be, if you wanna write it in interval notation. X can be anything, negative infinity up to negative two. Actually, negative five would be first. Union with negative five to negative two. Union again, negative two to infinity. Or you can also write it, which is the way that I prefer to write it, all real numbers with the exception of negative two and negative five. Okay, for this one, we have a square root function. Now, with the exception of imaginary numbers, you're not allowed to have a negative under the radical. So we are going to say fifteen minus three x has to be greater than or equal to zero. Now, it can be zero, we, it just can't be negative. So negative three x is greater than or equal to negative fifteen. We're dividing both sides by negative three. Remember to flip that inequality symbol again. So x has to be less than or equal to five. So as far as our domain goes, actually that is sufficient to leave it that way, but it would also be negative infinity up to five. Here we have a logarithmic function. And log functions only exist where this has to be greater than zero. So two x plus six has to be strictly greater than zero. And that means that two x plus six. That means that two x has gotta be greater than negative six. So x has to be greater than negative three. In other words, negative three to infinity. For the following equation, write the equation in slope intercept form and determine the slope and y-intercept. In other words, all we're doing is rewriting the equation in y equals mx plus b form. So we have x minus two y equals ten. We're going to subtract x from both sides. So we're gonna get negative two y equals ten minus x. And then divide both sides by negative two. That means we're going to have y equals positive one-half x minus five. Now, the one-half comes from right here, there is a one in front of our x. A negative over a negative is a positive. And ten divided by negative two is negative five. So this is our answer of the equation in slope intercept form. The slope is going to be our one-half. Our y-intercept is going to be negative five. Now it says to graph the equation on the following set of axes. We always start with our y-intercept, so we're going to go down five on our y-axis. From there, we're going to go up one and over two. So this is the graph of our equation. Grab the following function using transformations. We have f of x equals negative quantity absolute value of x minus four plus two. This is a shift to the right four units. From the parent function, this is a shift up two. And this is a reflection about the x-axis. So our parent function looks like this, just gonna sketch the dots in here. And the way that I like to do this is to take a few dots and apply all the transformations to it. So if I were to take this dot and reflect it over the x-axis, it's not gonna go anywhere. Then I'm going to shift that dot right four. And up two. So my new vertex is going to be up here. And we're gonna do that with another couple of points. If I take this and reflect it across the x-axis, it's going to end up down here. Then I'm going to take that same point, shift it right four. And then up two. Now let's try this point, if I reflect it, it's going to end up down here. Then I'm going to take that point, go right four and up two. So you guys can see the general pattern of our absolute value graph. Then we just connect the dots. And that's our answer. Determine if the following functions are even, odd, or neither, be sure to show work. If the function is even, what that's going to mean is when we evaluate the function. With negative x included, we're going to get our original function back. If it's odd, then when we plug in negative x. We're going to get the negative version of our original function back. Neither means that when we plug in negative x into our function, we are going to have mixed signs that we get back. In this case, let's work out a and see what we get. We're going to plug in a negative x everywhere that there is an x and we're going to see what we get back from it. So when we multiply a negative number an even amount of times, the result is going to be positive. So this is going to be twelve x to the fourth. When we, again, same thing, when we multiply a negative value an even amount of times, we are going to get a positive result. And then the absolute value of negative x is just x. So this is exactly the same as our original function, that means that this function is even. Let's try b. When we plug in negative x everywhere that there is an x. When we multiply a negative number an even amount of times, we are going to get an even number back. Excuse me, a positive number back. So it's going to be two x squared and then minus x. This sign stayed the same, this one did not change. Excuse me, this one did change, this one stayed the same, this one changed. That means that this function is neither. Now let's do it on option C. When we multiply a negative variable an odd amount of times, we are going to get a negative number back. So this is going to be negative seven x cubed minus four x to the fifth and plus x. Now you can see that all of our signs changed. That means that this function is odd. For the following piecewise equation, evaluate this function at the following inputs. Basically, the way that we're going to do this is we are going to look from the right side. And evaluate where our graph is negative five, nine, negative one, zero. And then plug that into the corresponding function. I like to think of these as kind of like the gates to get in. So x equals negative five, x equals nine, x equals negative one, and x equals zero. The piecewise function exists where x is negative five. On this function because x can be less than or equal to negative one. That means we're going to plug in negative five up here. So our answer for this is negative seven. Now, for the second one for B. Since x is equal to nine, that can go with this second function because x is greater than negative one. So we're gonna plug in nine in the absolute value of x minus one. So our answer is eight. Where x is negative one, that's going to be this first option. So we're going to plug in negative one for x here. So our answer is one. Lastly, for zero, zero exists where x is greater than negative one. So we're going to plug this into the bottom function here. The absolute value of zero is zero, minus one is going to be negative one. So those are the four solutions for those. Now it says to graph the piecewise function on the following axes. Since the defining factor or x value is negative one. I'm just gonna go ahead and draw a dotted line where x equals negative one there. Now, we have a linear function where x is less than or equal to negative one. So we can go ahead and just kind of sketch. The y-intercept is going to be three, but our graph does not exist on the right side. So we can just kind of use that as a placeholder. Our slope is two, so we can go from this point down two into the left one. And now this is going to be where our graph starts. From there, we can go down to left one. So all I'm doing is applying this slope right here because two is really two over one. And we have a positive slope, so this is what this looks like here. Then, for this second function, it's an absolute value function where x is greater than negative one. So on, starting on this point right here on this line. We have a y-intercept of negative one. That's going to be here. When we plug in negative one here, we'll have a zero. That means that our graph is going to intercept the x-axis at zero and it's going to be an open circle. Okay, since we have a symmetric function. We know that we can go ahead and plot the rest of our points here. So this is what our graph, our piecewise function looks like. It's an absolute value graph where x is greater than negative one. And it's a linear function where x is less than or equal to negative one. Given the functions, f of x equals three x plus seven and g of x equals x squared plus two x, find the following. So whenever we are adding two functions together, we can really just column add them or combine like terms. So f plus g of x is the same thing as three x plus seven. Plus x squared plus two x. Our like terms are two x and three x, so our final answer is going to be x squared plus five x plus seven. F g of x written like this is multiplication. So we're going to have three x plus seven times x squared plus two x. So this one is f of x, this is g of x. Now we need to foil these, so we're going to get three x cubed plus six x squared. Plus seven x squared plus fourteen x. So our final answer is going to be three x cubed plus thirteen x squared plus fourteen x. Lastly, we have division here. So we have f of x, 3x plus 7 on top, and we have x squared plus 2x on the bottom. There's nothing that we can do to further simplify this because there's no GCF. So that's our answer. Use this graph for the following questions. Over which intervals is this function increasing, decreasing, or constant? The way that I like to think about this is riding a roller coaster. So if you were riding a roller coaster, you would be on this side. Okay, and we'll draw you here having a great time, hair blowing in the wind. Okay, with a big smile on your face. So this would be a decreasing function, and what we use are our x-values for this. So it is decreasing from negative 5 to negative 2. Then you would be increasing from negative 2 to 0. Then from here, from 0 to 3. You would then be decreasing again. And actually, you would be decreasing forever after that. So it's not going to be just 0 to 3, it's gonna be 0 to infinity. And the reason it is infinity is because we are talking about x-values, right? So we're always gonna go from left to right here, and the arrow is hitting the infinity line, and we're gonna keep going forever. You're only increasing at one point. So these are the two sets of intervals. You are not constant anywhere. A constant graph would look something like this. And if you're on a roller coaster, you're not gonna be going straight for long. So that's the answer for a. Identify the location of any relative maximum or minimums. You must specify at the point as a maximum or minimum. Okay, again, using the roller coaster analogy, you can see here that this point is a low point. Now we use our y-values when we're talking about maxes or mines. So here it looks like it's going to be at 2, and so the minimum value there is gonna be y equals 2. This would be a relative max, and that's going to be at 0, 4. So that's gonna be it here. It's a relative max and also a relative min at y equals 4 and y equals 2. Okay, this is function composition. So for the functions f of x equals 3 over x plus 4 and g of x equals 4x plus 5, find each of the following and specify the domain of each. So when we have a composition function, we are going to plug the inner function in for x in the other function. So in other words, we're going to plug in 4x plus 5 everywhere that there is an x in this function. So we're gonna have 3 over 4x plus 5 plus 4. In other words, 3 over 3x plus 9. Remember that the domain for a rational function is only going to have a problem where our denominator equals 0. So we can go ahead and, well, let's simplify this first, 1 over x plus 3. And we know that our denominator cannot be 0. So x plus 3 is not allowed to be 0, so x is not allowed to be negative 3. But our domain is going to exist everywhere else, so all real numbers with the exception of negative 3. Now we need to find g of f of x, so we are going to plug in this function everywhere that there is an x in the function g. So we have 4 times 3 over x plus 4 plus 5. So we're gonna have 12 over x plus 4 plus 5. And if we go ahead and, I don't know if we actually need to find a common denominator for this, but we'll go ahead and do it anyway, just for good measure. We're gonna distribute this, so this would be 5x, and then we're going to have 12 plus 20, so 32, over x plus 4. And again, the only place that our domain is going to have an issue is where the denominator equals 0. So x cannot be negative 4. So the domain is going to be all real numbers with the exception of negative 4. This is our final answer. Or this may also be able to be your final answer here, depending. Both are technically correct. I just think it's preference, but your domain is also here. For the following function, find the difference quotient and simplify. So here, we are asked to replace x with x plus h, subtract the original function, and then divide by h. So f of x plus h, I'm actually gonna write this out a little separately first to kind of make it more organized. This is going to have to be foiled and simplified quite a bit. So before we actually write the difference quotient, I'm gonna do a little bit of side work here so that we can, again, stay organized. So minus 3x minus 3h plus 5. So f of x plus h is 2 times x squared plus h x plus h x plus h squared minus 3x minus 3h plus 5. Now we're going to distribute that 2 and also combine like terms. So we have 2 h x's, and it's gonna be times 2. So there's going to be 4 h x's plus 2h squared minus 3x minus 3h plus 5. And that is our final answer. 4 f of x plus h. Okay. Now that we have that part, that's this part, then we are going to subtract our original function here and then divide by h. So we are going to do that entire thing. 2x squared plus 4 h x plus 2h squared minus 3x minus 3h plus 5 minus the entire original function all over h. So 2x squared plus 4 h x plus 2h squared minus 3x minus 3h plus 5. Distribute that negative all the way over. Minus 2x squared plus 3x minus 5 all over h. We have our 2x squareds that are going to cancel. We have our 3x's that are going to cancel. We have also our 5's that are going to cancel. And then all of our remaining terms all have an h that will also cancel. So our simplified answer is going to be 4x plus 2h minus 3. The length of a rectangle is 3 feet more than twice the width. The area of the rectangle is 629. What is the dimensions of the rectangle? So we have area equals length times width. We know that the length is 3 feet more than twice the width, and that the area is 629. So let's go ahead and replace these variables with their corresponding variables here with the corresponding numbers. So we're gonna get 629 equals length. And the length is 3 plus 2w times the width. So now we can distribute that w. 629 equals 3w plus 2w squared. And I'm just gonna rearrange this and subtract 629 from both sides. So we're going to get 2w squared plus 3w minus 629 equals 0. And now we get to factor this and figure out what our width is. So 2 times 629 is 1258. We need factors of that that will add to 3. This is negative 1258. So the way that I like to start solving these is by doing a factor tree and trying to figure out what will go into each. Okay, so let me think here. Okay, well, it turns out that this doesn't factor, so we actually have to do the quadratic formula here. So we're going to do negative 3 plus or minus the square root of 3 squared minus 4 times 2 times negative 629 all over 2 times 2. I'm gonna type this into the calculator and see what we get. So we're going to get negative 3 plus or minus the square root of 5041. That's all over 4, and the square root of 5041 is 71 over 4. So our answer is going to be negative 3 plus 71 over 4 and negative 3 minus 71 over 4. So that's going to be negative 68 over 4 and negative 74 over 4. Negative 68 over 4 is negative 17. And this is going to be negative, or let's say positive, 18.5. Or in other words, 37 halves. So, um, let's see. Oh, this should be a positive, sorry. So our width is going to be 17. Now that we know that our width is 17, we have l equals 3 plus 2 times 17. L equals 3 plus 34, so the length is 37. For the following function, state whether the graph opens upward or downward. Identify the coordinates of the vertex. Determine the x-intercepts. Determine the y-intercept. Sketch the graph. Determine the axis of symmetry. Determine the max or min value of the function and write the domain and range of the function in interval notation. Okay, so a couple of these things I'm going to point out as we get going. First, let's start with a. A means that this function here has a negative in front of our x squared, so it is going to open downwards. The coordinates of the vertex, this is a specific formula where x equals negative b over 2a. b comes from this part right here. a comes from here. So we're going to have negative times negative 2 over 2 times negative 1. That's going to be positive 2 over negative 2. So the x-value of our vertex is negative 1. Now we have to plug that back into the original function to find out what the y-value, the corresponding y-value is. So that's going to be 1 plus 2 plus 3, and our y-value is going to be 6 here. So negative 1, 6 is the vertex. Determine the x-intercepts. For the x-intercepts, that's everywhere that y is going to equal 0. In other words, these are called the zeros of the function. Now, in order to make this a little bit simpler, I'm gonna go ahead and divide everything by negative 1 to make our exponent, excuse me, our coefficient of our squared term positive. So we're going to have x squared plus 2x minus 3. Then this factors really nicely, 2x, yeah, x plus 1, x minus 3. Nope, I had it right the first time. So then when we go ahead and solve for x, we're going to get x equals negative 1, positive 1, negative 3. These are going to be our x-intercepts. In other words, 1, 0, and negative 3, 0. Now we need to determine the y-intercept. This is everywhere where, um, excuse me, this is the part on our graph where x equals 0 and we cross our y-axis. So we're going to plug in 0 everywhere that there is an x. So everything's going to cancel out except for our 3. So our y-intercept is at 0, 3. Now we're going to be able to sketch the graph. If we know that our vertex is at negative 1, 6, it's gonna be here to start. We also know that it's downward facing and that our x-intercepts are at 1, 0, and negative 3, 0. We know that our y-intercept is at 0, 3. So this is, and our function is symmetrical, so it looks like it's gonna be something like this. Just realized here that when we plug this in, I forgot to square that. So this is going to be negative 1, and that means that our y enters, I mean, our y-value of our vertex is going to be a 4. Let's see, 5, 4. So negative 1, 4. I was wondering because our graph looked a little bit funky there. So we've got negative 1, 4, 0, 3, 1, 0, and then negative 3, 0. Okay, so then we have a symmetrical graph, and this is how it's going to look here. It is downward facing. So that's gonna be a sketch of the graph. Now determine the axis of symmetry. So the axis of symmetry actually falls along the same line as our vertex. So we can go ahead and just sketch that in here. The axis of symmetry AOS is going to be x equals negative 1. It is always the x-value of our vertex when it is a downward or upward-facing parabola. So f is going to be x equals negative 1. Determine the maximum or minimum value. Well, again, the vertex comes into play here. This is a maximum value, and it is at y equals 4. Okay, write the domain and range of the function in interval notation. Domain for polynomial functions, quadratic functions, is always going to be negative infinity to positive infinity, or all real numbers. So the domain is going to be negative infinity to positive infinity. Our range is going to occur from here down. So it's gonna be y is less than or equal to 4. Or in other words, you can write negative infinity all the way up to 4 and including 4. And that is all. So a tennis player hits a ball into the air. The arc of the ball can be modeled using the following equation, where h is the height of the ball x feet away from the tennis player. At what distance from the player does the ball reach its maximum height? We can go ahead and apply the vertex formula here to figure out what the maximum height is. We know that it's going to be a downward-facing parabola, so there is going to be a max. Our b-value is going to be 3.03, so we just plug that in. And then our a-value is negative 0.231. So once we plug that into the calculator, this is what we get. So once we plug, uh, plug that into the calculator, this is what we get. The x value of our vertex is going to be six point five, five, eight. Then we plug that back in to get the actual height. So once we evaluate that, we are going to get, let's see. The height is going to be. Nine point three, nine point nine. Three, five. This is going to be our value here. What is the maximum height? Oh, you know what? Just kidding. This is the second part. This goes down here. So our distance. Away from the player, that's actually this one, this is part A. And I went ahead and worked out part B as well. How far away from the tennis player did, will the ball land? So, in other words, when it lands, the height's gonna be zero. So all we have to do is replace the height with zero. And then solve it from there. So we can factor out an x from both of these terms. So we're going to have zero equals x. And it's gonna be negative point two three one x plus three point zero three. So x equals zero, that means that it started on the ground. And then we, let's see, we plug in or we solve this one as well. We subtract three point oh three from both sides, so we get negative point two three one x equals. Negative three point oh three. Divide both sides by negative, uh, point two three one. So, x equals thirteen point one two. Graph the following function. We have F of x equals x plus one quantity squared times x plus three times x minus two. So we can start off by finding the zeros of the function. By setting all of these equal to zero and solving for x. So we know x is going to equal negative one, x is going to equal negative three, and x is going to equal two. So let's go ahead and plot those first. We have negative one, negative three, and two. Since this one has a multiplicity of two, it's going to bounce at two, I mean, excuse me, at negative one. And it's going to cross through the other two points. Now, our end behavior is going to be. Uh, four, and it is positive. We have positive even, so it is going to be up, up, end behavior. Okay, so that means at negative three and at two, our end behavior is gonna be going like this. Okay, that means that looks like maybe it's gonna bounce up or something. Let's see here. The way that I always do this is I pick some points. Okay, so let's go ahead and graph, we'll graph these two. Negative one. Okay, we do know that it's going to bounce at the negative one, and our end behavior is up, up. Okay, so it is gonna look something like that. Looks like since we're gonna cross through the axis, it's gonna have to look something like this. It might vary a little bit, but that's essentially what it's going to look like. Okay, we can also plug in points to get exact values. So F of one equals one plus one squared, one plus three, one minus two. So F of one is going to be four times four. Times negative one, that's negative sixteen. Okay, that's gonna be way down there. So F of one is negative sixteen, which is going to go way down, and then it's gonna go back up there. We can also plug in something like negative two to kind of get an idea. So we're going to have negative two plus one squared. Times negative two plus three, and then negative two minus two. So we have negative one squared times negative, positive one. Times negative four. So one times one times negative four is negative four. So it'll look like this. And that's essentially what our graph is going to look like. List all the possible rational zeros for the following polynomial. Well, the possible rational zeros come from listing the factors of this term divided by the coefficient of our leading term. So the factors of P over Q are going to be plus or minus. One, two, three, four, six. And six, again, nine. Twelve, eighteen, and thirty-six. Over plus or minus one. Then, it says divide the polynomial, um, by x plus three, so I'm gonna go ahead and do synthetic. So we do x plus three equals zero. So x equals negative three, that's what goes in our box here. Then we're going to take all of our coefficients, line them up. Bring down our one. Multiply these two values, write the result here. Add straight down and repeat the process. So, our answer is going to be x squared minus x minus twelve. Okay, and that is dividing it. If they, if the directions were to factor it, then I would go one step further. And we would factor this, would be x minus four, x plus three. And then we have to write our original x plus three function up there. From the beginning, so. But full disclosure, I think that this problem is asking us to stop here. I just wanted to give you guys a little bit further in case you were asked to do that. Find the equation of the slant asymptote or nonlinear asymptote of the following rational function. So this is going to be, um, polynomial long division here. So we're going to ask ourselves, how many times does three x go into six x cubed? And that is going to be two x squared. Now, I like to do this. With the work over to the side, we're going to take our result and multiply that by the number on the outside. Distribute six x cubed minus two x squared, and then write this result underneath of here. Then, we can go ahead and distribute this negative in here. And then we just add or add straight down. So we have negative five x squared. Plus two x squared, that's going to be negative three x squared. And then we bring down our four x there. So how many times does three x go into negative three x squared? That result is going to be negative one x. Then, we can go ahead and take that result, multiply it by what is on the outside here. Distribute, and we're going to get negative three x squared plus one x. We write that result underneath here. We're gonna distribute that negative here, so we have three x squared plus three x squared. Negative three x squared plus three x squared, that's going to be zero, that's gonna cancel out. Now we have four x minus x. That's gonna be three x, and then we're gonna bring down our plus six. How many times does three x go into three x? Well, that's gonna be just one. So we're going to go ahead and take our one. Take our three x minus one, distribute that, so three x minus one. That's what we are going to subtract. And we do have a remainder here of seven. So. Our, um, asymptote here, our nonlinear asymptote, is actually going to be the part of our, it's gonna be our quotient. Excluding the remainder portion, because the remainder, um, doesn't really matter in this case. So this is the equation of our nonlinear asymptote here. Graph the following rational equation. Well, we know that we cannot divide by zero, so we're going to have a vertical asymptote at x equals three. I'm gonna go ahead and sketch that in here now. Okay, now, um, we are going to also have a horizontal asymptote, because the degrees. Of our numerator and our denominator are the same, so we can just divide the coefficients. So our, okay, let's start with our V A, that's going to be x equals three. And we're going to have our H A, and that's going to be y equals two. So we're gonna have this one up here. And then I just like to plug in points, um, just a few, and see where we are. So I like to plug in one to the right, let's try four, right of the vertical asymptote. So two times four minus five over four minus three. That's going to be three over one, which is just three. So four, three. Um, and then I like to plug in at least one to the left, so let's try two. We're going to get negative one over negative one, which is just one. So, uh, two, one. So our graph exists in both of these quadrants here, and it's going to look something like this. Depending on if your teacher requires it, um, you can plug in more points. But your graph is going to be approaching the asymptotes, so this is what your graph is going to look like. Solve the inequality and give your answer in interval notation. So we are going to subtract eleven x from both sides. We're going to get six x squared minus eleven x plus three is greater than zero. Now we have to factor this, so we have six times three is eighteen, we need a sum of negative eleven. So we have negative two and negative nine. I'm gonna go ahead and apply the bottoms up method here again. So x minus nine, x minus two, and then we'll divide both sides by six. So let's simplify, x equals negative three halves and x minus one third. Okay, let's go ahead, um, so. X minus three halves. We're gonna create a number line here. Okay, so this is going to be x equals three halves and x equals positive a third. So, a third would be about here. We would have three halves about here. A number between these points would be one. And these are going to be our test points. A number less than one third would be zero, and a number greater than three halves would be two. So let's go ahead and plug this in and see what we get. We are looking for the answers to be positive, greater than zero. We don't have to fully evaluate these, we just have to figure out the sign. So if I plug in zero here and here, I'm going to have two negative results multiplied together, that is positive. So, this is going to be part of our solution set from the left of one third. Now let's try to plug in one. If we have one minus three halves, that's going to be negative a half. But then we are going to have a positive result here. So, the middle answer is going to be negative, and this is not a part of our solution set. Now if we plug in two, we are going to have a positive result here, along with another positive result here. So our solution set is in fact going to exist to the right of three halves as well. So writing our answer in interval notation is going to be negative infinity to one third. Union three halves to positive infinity. Solve the inequality and give your answer in interval notation. We're gonna start off by cross multiplying here, so we're going to get negative four times x plus one. Let's go ahead and distribute that negative four, so we get twelve is greater than or equal to negative four x minus four. Now we can go ahead and add four to both sides. So we get sixteen is greater than or equal to negative four x. And then divide both sides by negative four. So our final answer is going to be negative four is less than or equal to x. Since it wants it in interval notation, x has to be greater than or equal to negative four. So, negative four all the way up to infinity is our answer. Determine if the following functions are inverses. There are two ways that we can do this. It's true that if F of G of x equals G of F of x, they're also inverses. But the way that I like to do it is to find the inverse of this one and check to make sure that it's the second one. It's a lot easier that way. Y equals four minus two x over three. So we can go ahead and replace x and y first. Now we can multiply both sides by three, and we're trying to go back and solve for y. So, three x minus four equals negative two y. So y equals negative three halves x plus two. Since we did not get the same inverse, this one should match this one. And it does not. This would be three halves x minus two. These two not match, so these are not inverses. Let's try it again on this one. We're gonna replace S of x with y. We're going to switch x and y, and then go back and solve for y again. So we're going to square both sides. Subtract three. And then divide by two. Once again, we have opposite signs here, so these are not inverses. Find the inverse of the following functions. So for this one, we are going to do the same process. We're going to replace F of x with y. Switch all of our x's to y's and all of our, and our y to our x. Cross multiply. Now we can distribute. We're going to get our y's together and our, um, other terms on the other side. So x y minus two y equals three minus two x. Now we can factor out a y here. Divide both sides by x minus two. To get y equals three minus two x over x minus two. And then we have to change our y back into the inverse function here. And that is our answer. Let's do this one. So we have y equals the cube root of three x plus four. X equals the cube root of three y plus four. We're going to cube both sides. So we have x cubed equals three y plus four. We're going to subtract four from both sides. And then divide by three. Then, we need to change our y back into an F of x, F inverse x function, and that's our final answer. Bismuth two oh seven is a radioactive isotope with. Bismuth two oh seven is a radioactive isotope with a half-life of thirty-two point nine years. If a hundred grams of bismuth two or two oh seven are present in a sample, then the function A of t. Equals one hundred times one half to the t over thirty-two point nine. Gives the amount present in the sample two years later. Find the amount of bismuth two oh seven in the sample at the following lengths of time. So this is half of our half-life time. So all we do is plug in the sixteen point four five for t. So we're evaluating the function of A at sixteen point four five years. So that's going to be. Over thirty-two point nine, which is going to be the same thing as one hundred to, uh, times one half. To the one half power. And that answer is going to be seventy point seven one. Okay, now we have to figure out at thirty-two point nine years. Well, that's just going to be one hundred times one half. The first power because thirty-two point nine divided by thirty-two point nine is one, so this is going to be fifty. A hundred and fifty years. Those same thing, we are going to go ahead and plug this in. And we get. Four point two four one five grams. You know, this should make sense, there is a half-life, so as the time increases. We should be getting less and less. If thirteen thousand dollars is invested in a bank account, which compounds continuously at a rate of three point five percent. How much will be in the bank account in nine years and round to the nearest cent? So this is going to be the formula P of t. Equals P not E to the r t. So this is the amount that's after nine years, this is the initial amount, this is the rate, and this is the time in years. So we know that thirteen thousand dollars is going to be invested. We know that we're evaluating it for nine years. And the rate as a decimal is point zero three five. So let's plug in everything and then see what we get. We're gonna plug this into our calculator, so the amount after nine years will be. Seventeen thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and thirty, uh, nearest cent, let's see. Thirty-seven cents. In other words. The cent is the hundredth. Write the following logarithms as a sum or difference of logs. Simplify each log in the simplest terms. So when we have a divided logarithm, we can write that as a difference. This is also called expanding logs. So we're going to have s squared radical t minus log base four. Of sixty-four x cubed, fourth root of y to the fifth. Now we have a product here. We have another product over here, so we can expand this actually quite a bit. This is going to be log base four of s squared plus log base four radical t minus. Okay, we've got log base four of sixty-four. Plus. We're just gonna go ahead. We'll write it like this. Log base four of x cubed, fourth radical of y to the fifth. Okay, this can apply the power rule here. We can rewrite log of radical t to log of t to the one half. So we're going to have two log base four of s. Plus one half log base four of t. Minus log base four of sixty-four, that's going to be three. Okay, we can do the BAM IT method, so four to what power is sixty-four? And we can rewrite that as four cubed or four x, four to the x equals four cubed. So x is three. Now we can go ahead and write this as a sum of logs. And further simplify this, so we will get. Three log base four to the x. And then this, um, y, the fourth root of y to the fifth is going to be five fourths. Log base four of y. Okay, so then we just distribute that negative to each term. And our final answer is going to be two log base four of s. Plus log for t over two minus three. Minus three log base four of x minus five fourths. Log base four of y. So for this one, we can go ahead and start simplifying the inside, so natural log. We can rewrite this e to the sixth by bringing it up to the numerator as e to the negative six. Y to the eighth, and then the fifth root of x. And the natural log will still apply, so we can write natural log of e to the negative six. Plus natural log of y to the eighth, fifth root of x. Now, natural logs and e's are inverses, so this is going to just be negative six. Now we can rewrite this as log, natural log of y. Plus natural log. Y to the eighth, plus natural log of the fifth root of x. Apply the power rule here. So negative six plus eight, natural log of y. And if we rewrite this as natural log of x to the one-fifth power. We can also write this as one-fifth natural log of x. This is our final answer. Write the following logarithmic expressions as a single logarithm with coefficient one. Simplify as much as possible and write fractional exponents as roots. So we can apply the power rule and maybe the quotient rule too. There's also several different ways to do this, but I'm gonna start off by writing the power rule. So this will be natural log of two to the fourth. Minus the natural log of x to the two-thirds. Plus natural log of y to the fifth. Two to the fourth is going to be sixteen, so the natural log of sixteen. Minus the natural log of x to the two-thirds. Or in this case. The cube root of x squared. Since it asks us to switch it. And then plus natural log of y to the fifth. So we can write these two as a quotient. And then we can write these two as a product. We can go ahead and apply the power rule for this one as well. So we're gonna move this three up here, we'll move this three-fourths up here. So we'll get log base four of x cubed. Plus log base four of y to the three-fourths. Minus log base four of z. So we have a sum here that we can go ahead and write as a product. Log base four of x cubed, y to the three-fourths. And then we have minus log base four of z. Since we have a difference, we can write it as a quotient. And at the same time, we also need to rewrite our fraction, um, rational exponent as a radical. And this is our final answer. Write the following logarithms in exponential form. So this is the BAM IT method, log base B of m equals A is BAM. So we're going to write five to the fourth equals six twenty-five. We have log of one over ten thousand equals negative four. Now when the log is not, when the base is not written, it's a ten for log. So ten to the negative fourth equals one over ten thousand. When the base is not written for natural log, we are going to have e to the negative six. Equals one over e to the sixth. Write the following exponential fun, functions in the logarithmic form. So this is already in the format, B, B of A equals m. So we're going to write log base B of m equals A. So this is going to be log of twelve, log base twelve of seventeen twenty-eight equals three. This is going to be log base four of one over ten twenty-four. Equals negative five. This is going to be log base ten. Of ten million. Equals seven. Okay, now the instructions say to simplify the following. This is again a ten, and really it's asking us to set that equal to A. So ten to the A equals m. Which is a thousand in this case. Now we need to get the bases to be the same. We know that we can rewrite this as one hundred times ten and ten times ten. So we can rewrite the right side of this to be ten cubed. Since our bases are the same, our answer is going to be A equals three. Log base three of one over eighty-one equals A. So three to the A equals one over eighty-one. We can break down eighty-one into nine times nine and three times three. So we know that three to the A equals one over three to the fourth. Now to get this to be the same base, we can just move our three up to the top and make our denominator negative. So in that case, A equals negative four. Six raised to the log six, log base six power of ten. These are actually inverses of each other, so our answer is ten. Evaluate the following logarithms using a calculator. I'll go ahead and pull up my calculator and show you how to plug this in. Here, we have log base, which is about two-thirds of the way down here. We're going to insert a four here and then toggle over to one hundred. And our answer is three point three two two. Applying the same thing, clicking math, log base fifteen of fifteen thousand. Our answer is going to be three point five five one. Math, log base one twenty of five is going to be zero point three three six two. Now we're going to solve the following exponential equations. So again, our goal is to get the bases to be the same. So we can break this down into twenty-five and five, and then five and five. So we can rewrite the right side of our equation to be five cubed to the two x power. So now that our bases are the same, we can write three x minus two equals six x. Subtract three x from both sides to get negative two equals three x. And then divide both sides by three, so x is negative two thirds. For this one, since there's no way to get our bases to be the same. We can go ahead and apply the logs on both sides of the equation. Then we can apply the power rule. And then we can divide both sides by two log four. And then get x equals, after we plug this into the calculator. Point five eight zero five. For this one, we're gonna go ahead and isolate our grouping symbols first. So we'll add four to both sides. Divide both sides by five. And again, since we can't get our bases to be the same here, we can just go ahead and take the log of both sides. Then apply the power rule and bring this in the front. Now we'll divide both sides by log three. Subtract one and then divide by two. In other words, we can say, we'll go ahead and write it like this. We'll multiply everything by one half. So x equals log base five over two log three minus a half. Then we can plug this into our calculator and we'll get approximately. Uh, point two three two five. Solve the following logarithmic equations. So we are going to isolate the log term again by subtracting three. Divide by four. So we're going to get the natural log of two x minus one equals two. Now we can take the e of both sides, that's going to get this natural log gone. Now we can add one. And divide our final result there by two. And after we plug that into the calculator, we'll get approximately. Four point one nine four five. This is probably the easiest type of equation. Because when we have our logs that are equal to each other, they just cancel. So five x minus one equals nine. So five x equals ten and x equals two. Here, we're going to apply the properties of logs and then we are going to BAM IT. So this is the product property. Let's go ahead and distribute that x to both terms. Now we are going to BAM this, two to the sixth. Now we are going to BAM this, two to the sixth equals X squared minus twelve X. Two to the sixth power is going to be sixty-four. Let's go ahead and subtract sixty-four. And then we'll go ahead and see if we can factor this. Are there factors of negative sixty-four that add to negative twelve? We have, let's see. Fourteen. Take a look, we've got one in sixty-four, two in thirty-two. Four in sixteen. Those are going to be the two. So we're going to get X minus sixteen and X plus four. So X is going to be sixteen and negative four. And that's our answer. Same process here, we're going to apply the product property first. And then we're going to BAM this. So we have log base six. Of X squared minus four X minus nine X minus plus thirty-six equals one. Log base six of X squared minus thirteen X plus thirty-six equals one. Now we're going to have six to the first power. Equals X squared minus thirteen X plus thirty-six. So we can subtract six from both sides. Now we're going to factor this. So our answer is going to be ten and three. So if you've made it all the way through this with me, congratulations. This is a very long review, but it is for a final, a comprehensive final for college algebra. So I hope that this was helpful for you. Let me know in the comments if you have any questions and good luck on your final.